We'll go ahead and get started with our meeting, Tuesday, May 27th. I'll ask for suspending the rules.
I'll second.
Alright, it's been proposed by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Councilman Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. If the clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5O, Exhibit A only. Resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security.
Move the agenda as amended?
And I'll second.
Motion to move the agenda as amended by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any additional discussion? There being none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report. You may need to push a button or two on there, Mayor. No, that was not working. Okay, that isn't working.
There you go.
Alright. Okay, for 20 years of service from the Fire Department, boo them in. Boo, there you go. Alright, very good. Now, Ms. Hunt, this is Ms. Hunt's show to give us an update on the museum.
Oh, yes. That was a big day at our Chris.
There's not enough numbers.
Y'all know I'm here.
We know.
We hear you before we see you.
I'm up there when you have your questions.
We've got some beautiful baked goods.
I just wanted to tell y'all I'm asking for all the support, but, and then I'm, but, Abreza, I don't, Abreza, I don't know who's on here.
You can take this one, Mike.
We're also in the process of getting membership for the Mardi Gras Museum. And Paul, I was under the impression, because Kenny Glavine told me, and so did George Lawrence, that you were going to be a royal member for $500.
That was a royal something else.
Ms. Hunt, you hear all kinds of rumors like that in the political sphere.
I know. I'm going to give each one of y'all one of these, thanks to Abreza. She's the one that, you know, everybody does everything by, what do you call it, on the computer. Abreza made these for me.
Thank you.
So that I have these, alright, so I can give them out. So y'all each have one. You can be a senior citizen member for $40. George.
For old people?
No, no, it's for young people. Anyway, any of the rest of you that want a membership information, please let me know. So I'm going to turn it over to Abreza, and again, I thank you for everything you all do and all your support. Abreza.
Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, alright. So it's good to see everybody again. Been a minute. Since I last saw all of you, we have had over 800 visitors come through the museum. That would be since about November, I believe was the last time we were here. That includes, recently, we hosted the Leadership Gulf Coast class for this year, walking through, talked about Mardi Gras. We did the same thing with a group of about seven European journalists, so that's a really cool thing to have. So looking forward to reading what they write. Also, just a quick update, I'm working on refreshing some of the displays in the museum and updating a lot of the text panels, so hopefully, once we get all of that settled, please come by and see what we've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hear my phone ringing in the background, we'll let it ring. Last part of my mayor's report, I want to say a couple of things. A couple of things happening this week. And first, 81st Wing Commander Billy Pope, Colonel Billy Pope, is, we'll be moving on, I think, to DC in his next command, and tomorrow, there'll be a reception at Keachler, at the Bay Breeze Community Center. He's been a big part of our community for, I think, three years now, huh Mike? About three? And always, every parade, he comes with an outstanding, whether St. Patrick or Mardi Gras, whatever, but he's been a true Biloxiian, and we're going to miss him, but he's, I think he's on the way up as far as stars. I think he'd be joining Michelle Edmondson, as well as Deb Lovett, in the Pentagon here very shortly. So he's appreciated, we, I think Mike emceed a ceremony at Keachler at the Veterans Day Parade, and I think he's most appreciative of his wife Amanda and his family. I hate to leave here, but they've been here a while, and it's part of their military life. Speaking of life, this week also, on the 30th, the guy that's sitting next to me, has been sitting next to me in a lot of ways since the first grade, right? I'm not going to go back to the first grade at Sacred Heart School, or when I went to military school and came back, or when we had Notre Dame High School together in 1960-ish through 65, I believe. And we were probably this close to each other on Friday nights, every, you know, every practice, right? And I was the center and he was the right guard. But, it was, I think, 2015, and I'm doing this for our people in the video world, because he's meant that much to me over a long time. Now, I'll be repeating some of this, because we're all going to have a sort of appreciation reception here at 3:30 on Friday, his last day. So I'm, you know, I talked him out of retirement once, and that was happened to be in 10-1, 2016, right? I said, "We were going to have fun." We had some fun, right Mike?
It was every day.
But, at the time, we had 55 miles of street torn up, and that was the infamous North Contract, okay? And it's immeasurable what he has meant to me and to the citizens of Biloxi. He's a hometown boy, and still going to be here with, you know, that Biloxi DNA that's fully charged. We're going to, we're going to miss him, I'm going to miss him, but day to day, from, you know, I think I was mayor in 2015, May, and he came on board, I was able, you know, all of my buddies, and I think we've got some football players coming here for our little class on Friday, too.
First time hearing.
But, anyway, it's been immeasurable for me, for Fofo, his friend, and Mike, my buddy, and as well as the people that live and know him, you know, Mike's, his passion for Biloxi, and it's been really hard for me to fathom, you know, what, how hard it would have been done. You think about what we went through, the North Contract, for instance, and then as we worked through a number of things, you know, how about the New Main Gate, and a number of things that were ongoing right now. We have tremendous progress with the extension, Potters Ferry Extension. We've been day to day, you know, nose to nose with everybody from CSX to Air Force, and a lot of things he's taught me, and the Biloxi, the citizens of Biloxi will surely miss his expertise, but he's still living down the street. He might not get paid for his thoughts, but we'll, we'll tap him. But I did promise him we'd have fun, and I've had fun, and I hope he's enjoyed it as much as I've had, and how we benefited from his energy and expertise. So I would, you know, say to everyone, Mike, I'm going to miss you, but, you know, we will, we will continue, you know, that Biloxi, that Biloxi thing we have. So I would, we've got, somebody with a camera can do a photo op, I'm going to shake hands with him in the middle of this last official role as CAO of the citizens of Biloxi at this city council meeting. Mike, on me first.
But not mine.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike. CIA.
It's been my honor and pleasure to serve the city, and it's been working with the council. I've tried very much to work with you behind the scenes, send you information, make you look good to your residents. It's not us and them, it's all about the one team, and I've enjoyed doing it.
That's wonderful.
Amen.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Mike, I'd like to add, not only service to your country, service to your city, and service to your family and friends, it's certainly appreciated, and it's been likewise an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and your doors has always been open, and your communication has been very transparent, and I, for one, and I believe we all, thank you for that. Alright, Mayor, does that conclude your report?
My report.
Mike, does that conclude your report? There you go. We'll go move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Mike, for 10 years of putting up with Fofo. You've got to be a tough man to put up with Fofo. Does anybody put up with Fofo other than his wife for 10 years? That's a miracle. Alright? But, that's the heart of the Juggers Lab over there.
Yes.
You got to, give you all the good news on the Shuckers, they like 11 games over 500 in first place, and they started the season 1-7. So they've been on a roll the last few weeks, they've been playing them well.
It's a young team, and they just had their, they didn't get their legs underneath them right away, but they tell me that they're really playing together now, and that is pretty amazing, it went from zero wins to first place.
I was going to ask you one question, Fofo and Mike, they've here 15 years, and these teams always swap places, go to a new ball field. Have you heard anything about them leaving anything? Because it's been 15 years since they've been here. I mean, 10 years. Excuse me.
To say, no, I haven't heard anything, but I think, you know, the change in ownership and the investment that's going on right now will, I think, solidify where we are for at least five years, I think. But you never know.
Yeah.
It's a business, and, you know, I guess each major league franchise has some thoughts on what their intent is for, you know, the minor league balls, you know, ball games, ball teams, but, well, you know, we'll be prepared.
Councilman, I'm sure the mayor points out here that the previous owner was really not investing in the business. This guy's put $2 or $3 million of his own money into the stadium. If he was leaving, he wouldn't have done that.
No, I was just wondering, because they'll start looking, they played like that chess game, you know? Like Huntsville came down here to Biloxi, so they built a new stadium. Mobile left Mobile to go play at Huntsville, because they built some new stadium up there. They're just always moving around a lot, so I was just wondering if anything was going Once again, I've seen this on TV, I didn't know anything about this, $200,000 for the, so where'd that come from? And how come we weren't informed that? You always got to go on TV first?
Yeah. Anyway, bottom line, this is, again, a situation where fundraising, you know, as far as, first of all, this, the main part of it was the carpet, to finish up the carpet, I'm not sure, a thousand yards of carpet, plus lighting, and some of the audio visual, and then finally the video, the wall, kinds of things, but the intent was to get into an amazing fundraising mode, Friends of the Sanger 2025, to sell some opportunity for advertising. The mode is, you know, it's better to do it faster than go raise the money and then try to do it. The idea is, hey, let's get in business, which we are very hopeful, and there's a couple of events that we were shooting at. First of all, inauguration, we were shooting, but bottom line, there's a number of moving parts, and again, I think archives in history pushed us back about six weeks, don't you think? Some of the plaster refinishing was, you know, was delayed, so we're still pushing, but certainly, within the next three months, I think, we'll be full bore, ready to start scheduling events and doing events. But, it's a temporary thing, we've got the economic development, almost like a facade brand, to be paid back through the fundraising efforts and the event revenue off the Sanger.
So where's that on the agenda today?
It's on the consent agenda, and it might, it's the last part of consent agenda.
5B.
5B.
5.
Yeah.
And how you say you're going to pay it back?
Fundraising. Friends of the Sanger, as they do, you know, selling bricks, selling sponsorships, number of things. We haven't gotten into that mode at this point, but we're very close to being able to say, hey, this is, you know, a way to have your name, your business, as well as your family name, you know, involved in the Sanger, in the restoration of the Sanger, you know? That was around since 1927 or '28, I'm not sure which, but we're going to get in a full-blown fundraising mode, but that's for the last things on the interior. Again, the carpet was the main thing, we're looking at, you know, bringing back that look and feel that used to be in the Sanger.
Just, it's hard to believe that we spent over $6 million, and we need another $200,000 to finish the job. Just seems like to me.
I don't think it was $6 million, but bottom line, we had a number of parties.
Exactly, probably more than $6 million.
Well, whatever. But bottom line, you know, you want to wait another year, and for $400,000 before we have it in our hand, or go do this, like, you know, it's something to do, be in business first, and then pay it back with the revenues we anticipate, but most of the revenues, I assume, we could raise a million dollars easy in a fundraising mode. We haven't asked anyone at this point, but we intend to do that, you know? People who've served as Friends of the Sanger, and I think we'll, we've got a foundation ready, ready to move forward with Friends of the Sanger 25, 2025. So we're going to get that into business as fast as we can.
So much for that. Anyway, that's it. Thank you. Alright. Mr. Guines.
Alright. I also would like to thank Mike for all his years of service. We appreciate everything you've done for us. Appreciate you putting up with me, especially when it come down to MML, wanting a few things. So congratulations, and you've served well, just like you did in the military. I also wanted to acknowledge or speak about yesterday, on yesterday, Memorial Day, we had a big tribute for Mr. Tyrone, the name in of the streets. We had over 200 people there. We had a wonderful time, festival time, and what was funny is that the guy that Tyrone took the business from, or bought the business from, was from Franklinton, Louisiana, and I got to meet that person's granddaughter via ancestry.com. That person was my third cousin, which was awesome, so that was great. So I got a chance to mend and tie all that together, and found out that Mr. Tyrone have the same cousins I have. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
I too want to thank you, Mike. Your door has always been open, very communicative, very helpful, and I really appreciate it. You've made it the whole journey much more smooth, and I appreciate it, and I wish you well.
They don't want me reading it. I don't like to.
Anytime, 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 neighbor. And I wish you and your wife well, and God bless you. Do we have any update on the Broadwater property, CSX?
Today found out that CSX is waiting on, to cut down some trees and brush and all that. That's just what we've been told. So for the time being, I guess they're just cleaning up the trash, and then we should see the trees and stuff start to come down. Because as we all know, they clean up the trash, don't clean up the trees, they're just going to come back.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we're pushing for.
Do we have any homeless on the property right now?
Occasionally, they run into one or two, and they either run them off, the other day, they arrested a few because they'd been told once before, but they go out there on a daily basis.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. McGeever?
I'd just like to echo what everybody said, Mr. Mike, about your service, not only to the country, but to the citizens of Biloxi, and more importantly, to myself, in my short tenure on the council, you've never failed to return a phone call, never not let me come in your office. We've had some lengthy discussions about different things, and you've really helped me in my service to what I've done for Ward 4 and the city of Biloxi, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, just, first of all, an observation, we should be using the streets weep more frequently. We've budgeted $75,000 in this fiscal year, we're halfway through the year, we've only spent $20,000 on that, with as much, geez, litter and everything on the roads, it'd be great if we could maybe schedule that more frequently, it's just, the money's there, we just need to be sure that it's done. The second thing is, council members, I put a document or two in your box, if you'd look over that, if you have any questions, please call me. The last thing is, Mike, I want to thank you. I've known you probably longer than, I think, I'm quite sure, longer than anybody else on this council. You lived on Lafayette Street, I think you were about 16, or 15 or 16. I knew who you were, I saw you a few times, you had a thick head of blond hair, and this was like the early 60s, I think, late 50s, early 60s, and I had a crew cut at that age. So, still do. So, yeah, yeah. Never let your wife cut your hair when she's mad. But having said that, I do want to thank you for your services, Felix mentioned, not only to your country, but it's, it says something when somebody in your position is a local guy. It makes a difference. You understand the city, you understand a lot of the people, maybe even most of the people. None of us understand all the people, as we can all attest to, I think. But I appreciate the job you've done for the city, and I appreciate your candor, and working with the council when you've been able to do that. Thank you so much for your service. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Schumaker?
Yeah, just one thing. I had, last week was my first, not a regular war meeting where all the directors show up, but I started once a month, on the third Thursday of the month. Moving forward, I'm going to have a meeting at the Woolmarket City Center from 5:00 to 7:00 every month, and really, it's just, you know, citizens can show up. I'd been planning to do it, and I didn't want to do it right there at election time, but, so I waited a little bit, but, but it's just, you know, I'm accessible, obviously, through phone, text, Facebook Messenger, and everything else, but this way, if anybody wants to come in and talk to me in person, they can come in and talk. We had a few people show up last week, but I'll continue next month as well, and moving forward, the third Thursday, 5:00 to 7:00 of every month, at the Woolmarket City Center. And lastly, Mr. Mike, I know I've only been on the council a short time, but you really have, you've made it easy. You've helped me out in a lot of ways through those year and a half, or a year and a half, so I do appreciate that. But before you leave, I've got a few more things I need some help with in the next couple of days, so, I'm just kidding, I really don't, but I do appreciate everything. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I got, today I've got a big report, I've got three people that I want to recognize. A couple of them have been mentioned already, Mr. Tyrone Burton, Commander Pope, and Ron First of all, Mr. Tyrone, it was certainly a privilege to say a few words yesterday. It was sunshiny, it was hot, and it was a real good event, feel-good event, to recognize a family that has contributed a lot, and they were so, they were so appreciative to be recognized and to rename part of Main Street, Tyrone-Burton Way. Good food, good people, and good times, and he's certainly to be commended for his contributions to Biloxi. Commander Pope, the mayor kind of mentioned Commander Pope, he's leaving, and, you know, what's interesting is the deeds that people do. Commander Pope presented a flag and presented a letter to, the same person that cuts my hair cuts his hair, it's not Tyrone Burton, but we go to the same person that cuts our hair, and she was blown away by his gesture, and she will forever remember it, I'm sure she'll tell all the people that sit in her chairs as they get their haircut, what a great man Commander Pope has been for the community, and what an impact he's made in her life for that gesture, and we thank him for that. And last, today, is Ron, Ron Perisic, who recently passed away. Ron, a man of integrity, he went to Ole Miss, played baseball actually on their World Series team, if people don't know. Got the opportunity to sit with his wife this morning, my wife actually cooked a ham, and I went over there, presented, and got caught up in a cup of coffee, and an hour and a half later, we shared some stories together, two stories I'll share. When I ran for councilman, I remember going and seeing Ron, and I said, "Hey, what do you think?" It's, I'm getting in real late, it was only a few days before the cutoff date to qualify, and I see all these signs everywhere, and the first thing he said, and you've heard this cliche, and he was right, signs don't vote, and that put me in turbocharge and gave me the inspiration to go forward. A story that Ms. Ramona shared with me today, I asked her a question, "How'd y'all meet?" And she said, "Well, you know, I was up at college in a sorority, Ron was playing baseball out there, up at Ole Miss, and we ended at one of these parties, and they asked Ron," Ron was actually kind of shy, and his back was hurt, he was rehabbing his back, and went to this party, and they said, "Is there anybody you want to meet here tonight?" And he said, "I don't know," and about that time, he looked up, there was this, like in the movies, this staircase, and Ramona was coming down the staircase, and Ron was a tall drink of water, and she could see him down at the bottom, and he looked at her, and the rest was history from there. 50-something years of marriage. So I thank her for sharing that. But Ron, being in our community, in the business community, in the legal profession, and in so many facets of what we do here on the coast and up in Jackson, he's had a lot of impact on people's lives and on the success of our city and our state, and I would hope that today we can close in memory of Ron Perisic. And that concludes my report. Okay, we'll, we'll now move on to the public agenda, which is citizens' comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each individual has approximately three minutes. There's not a lot on the agenda or in attendance today, so if you hear the bell ring, you may have a few more seconds to finish your thought, and we have to move on to the next person. So we'll start on my left, your right. Anyone have anything to say? State your name, your address.
And Dixie, poor people have worked very hard. I came home from a month being away at a business I started with a friend, which has become 250 full-time employees. That gave me some time to think, and when I came back, there's basically no homeless people by me. Neighborhood's quiet, so I just wanted to say thank you. And moving forward, a lot of people up here, a lot of people put a lot of hard work in. Are we having a town hall homeless meeting? We're going to act like it? I mean, I don't know, but let's keep the momentum going. Also, be very careful of what happens to our neighborhood moving forward. I'm a little concerned about what's going on at the old school property, but everything looks much better. I don't know where the poor people are, but, like I said, our neighborhood's about to become a historic neighborhood, and people are outside, and it's much quieter. It was the first time I could leave my wife alone for a month and feel safe, and I just think that maybe, I don't have the energy to start this back up again, but if you guys are thinking... are thinking, no, we can't let it come back to what it was before, but if you have any more suggestions, I'm sure homeless are still out there, gonna want to come, and I think the mayor's trying to do great things in that side of town, but I would like to give a lot of appreciation to the tough job she has there in code enforcement, but she's been a real sweetheart, and we won't bring up her. But, and Dixie, for all you've done, I really appreciate it. And for everybody else, and Mike, thanks. Spent a lot of time with our neighborhood, and you really made a difference. Mike, you know, I'll get you a Snickers. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, like to come up to speak? Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room?
Never bothered.
There being no one, citizen comments is now closed. Oh, we have one. Step up to the mic, state your name and your address. Mr. Kevon Ladner?
Stop parole, thank you. Kevin Ladner, 382 Forest Avenue. What I'm here to address today is some discrepancies in the speed limits in this town. And most of you should be familiar with it, but it's something that I didn't realize until just recently, when I had the honor of being pulled over by Biloxi's finest. And the situation being is Porter Avenue, Robinson Street, Forest Avenue, Bayview Avenue, and Judge Seacool. Judge Seacool sits there at thirty miles an hour. Now, that runs from Porter into the Old Gate Two of Kesar. Forest Avenue is twenty-five. Gill Avenue is fifteen, which is where I was pulled over. South of the railroad tracks, Gill Avenue is twenty-five. And so I'm not here to complain about being pulled over, but if they're gonna run radar, and you're coming off of thirty miles an hour and take that left-hand turn onto Gill Avenue, that is not enough time to decelerate. That fifteen mile an hour sign sits right there on a pole behind the old A and W. So with these discrepancies in this neighborhood, including Bayview Avenue is thirty miles an hour, then you get down to your old house, Mr. Tisdale, and I believe if I turned off of that by your old house on tuxedo, then that's a fifteen. So, that's an area that needs to be addressed. Oh, and the other thing, Robinson Avenue is fifteen miles an hour, runs from Porter Avenue into the cemetery, but the new designed road that runs east off of Robinson, I believe it's called Esposito, that is twenty miles an hour. That road ain't even a quarter of a mile long, so you're coming off of fifteen, twenty, into a dead end at Queran Street. So I was hoping that the city public works, and somebody would be here, and the chief would be here, but there's a lot of discrepancies. As you well know, it's twenty-five miles an hour unless otherwise posted, but that one situation, if they're gonna run radar, give somebody a chance to decelerate, because the motorcycle cop was sitting at the railroad tracks. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ladner. Anyone else like to come up and speak? There being no one, citizen's comments is now closed. We'll move on to our policy agenda, first reading, item A.
Ordinance amending Chapter Five Buildings, adopting applicable portions of the 2024 International Building Code.
Simone.
Moved by Mr. Guines. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale, this is the first reading, item B.
Ordinance amending Chapter Five, Section 514-1, Designation of Enforcement Officer, by adopting the ICC 62020 standard for residential construction in high-wind regions.
Entertained a motion?
I'll move it again.
Seconded. Moved by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, this is a first reading, item C.
Ordinance amending Chapter Seven Fire Prevention, adopting applicable portions of the 2024 International Fire Code.
Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Mr. Guines?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale, this is also a first reading. Move on to the, is that it? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Guines, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, on item P, which is the Sanger Theater, how much money is needed to complete the work that needs to be done at the Sanger?
I'm not sure as we roll through and how it works, but they're, probably will get us everything, lights, some PA, as well as the carpet will get us there. Now, there's a significant benefit and expense related to the video wall that will range anywhere from a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, but that puts us in a true theater, true production mode, and again, what I'm feeling is that this two hundred thousand will get us up to where we need to be in a timely wise to open the building, and there will be, you know, whatever we want to expend in the video wall component being raised by some fundraising and some sponsorships to pay it back. So, you know, it could be a half a million dollars, it could be less than that, but this two hundred thousand, I think, will get us to open the place mode with, you know, significant audio and lighting, as well as carpet.
Well, we have for some, for some capital projects, I'm thinking, let's take the Fire Station Five. There's some, I think, still a decision to be made whether to improve Station Five where it's currently located, probably more preferable is a new station on the Pops Fair Extension. We had talked about that, but that money's, it's set aside, but...
Not, yeah, that's right. It's there, and it's part of the bond that we talked about, two-point-five million, I think, for that, and the evaluation is, should we add to the existing, or even increase the footprint there by the church that sits next to it, or do we look at a better location with significant, I think, we talked about that, Chief, Friday, with a better response to the south and also to the north. So we're evaluating new or revised.
When is a decision expected to be made on Fire Station Five, for example?
We talked about it today as far as potential sites, you know, especially around the new, you know, Pops Fair Extension. There's a couple of remnants of property that may be part of our, you know, opportunity, but certainly, the traffic, the, Chief, you can update us if you need to, but basically, to get into the traffic to respond to where we need to respond, it's kind of a challenge at this point in time. Give me my opinion on that.
It's not necessary, Chief, thank you. Yeah, I'm using that as an...
I would say in the next couple of months, we should be able to do that.
I'm using that as an example. There are a number of other capital projects where we've set aside money for these projects, why can't we move some of that money into the Sanger Theater if we need, you're asking for two hundred thousand, if we need three or four hundred thousand, whatever it is, why don't we move that money and just finish the Sanger project?
It's certainly a possibility, but, you know, again, the economic development, it's part of downtown, it's part of the situation, it's to be paid back. Anything we do on the economic development's to be paid back. So the only, you know, the juice that you're talking about would be the interest we wouldn't be making, you know, and there would be some interest in the contract.
I understand that. My point really is, why don't we just move the money that we've got to move from some of these other capital projects that really have not moved much? There may not be any plans to, we've created the projects, and we do that quite frequently, create the projects, and it's years before they're finished, but if we have money set aside for these other projects that we may not be planning to move forward any time at this next fiscal year, why don't we move the money and complete that project, the Sanger project, and be done with it? Start using it.
Well, you know, it was my opinion that the two-point-five million, if we get our act together as far as property, on the Fire Station, we gotta have that money to go bid it, to actually design and go bid it. So, I mean, it's, you know, I'm thinking that within a year and a half or two years, that will be flushed. Whatever we spend on the Sanger will be flushed from fundraising. So, I mean, it can be done either way, but, I mean, this is the most, and we can still do that, we do, you know, let's get this thing open, and then replenish it with the part of that two-point-five, two-point-five that you, you know, you're referring to. So we can, you know, pay that back by repurposing whatever we don't need in the two-point-five for the Fire Station.
Well, it's just, we need to have a plan to finish the Sanger, a timeline, the cost. Right now, there's some things that you want done, you listed a few.
I listed all of them, as far as, you know, what we need to do to the interior.
That's all that's gotta be done, it's gonna be roughly half a million dollars. You're asking for two hundred thousand, we're just looking around to find another three hundred thousand there, a number of capital projects out there, and you would know better than we would which ones we're not going to move substantially forward with. If that's the case, let's make that decision the next council meeting or two, move that money and get the Sanger done and taken care of.
Well, I mean, that's still doable, but, you know, we've got to have some authority.
I know, with all due respect, I know it's doable, let's do it.
Well, you know, this is my opinion, this is the fastest way to pull the trigger, and again, we can undo this, and, you know, once we get a solidified situation on the cost, you know, we went through a bid process with all of, you know, the whole thing, it turned out to be a million something, and we're looking at different ways to do, you know, the purchasing. You know, I had hoped to be in the mode where we could do the next inauguration in the Sanger, but, you know, circumstances threw that a curve, but, you know, this is my, you know, best way to move this thing forward as rapidly as we can. Again, this is a temporary financing mode that we can get back into the mix real quick. This is my opinion. I would rather do it this way than, you know, go find out what we're gonna have to do if we need two-point-five when we build this Fire Station.
Right, so let's go back.
Can I add, please?
Say again.
I'm sorry, I missed without a voice here today, but your comment is worth, has merit, but I wanted to add to the information that it gets very deceiving if you look at the capital project list, there seems like to be a lot of money parked, but remember that money is Thailand's money, Gomez's money, M.D.'s money, D., I'm trying to think, ARPA money. So a great deal of the money that appears to be hanging on the tree can't be harvested because it's tied up in none of these grants.
Sure, and I understand that, but there's also some unspent general obligation money from various bond issues over the past couple of years, I believe, and looking at it over the weekend, so we could move some money. I don't think that's an issue, but it's just, you're gonna have to look through the projects and have a plan on when that timeline is, so when these things move forward, you've got money there to do those projects. I understand that. One other question about the Sanger, do you have an estimated timeline when the Sanger would be completed and open?
Two months.
Two months, all right, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
I got a follow-up to that, Paul, can I?
Sure, I'm done.
Do you mind if I take a second?
Go ahead.
With this, and this may be a Peter question, or maybe a mayor question, we do TIFs, would a TIF qualify for doing any improvements to the Sanger Theater if we took the businesses that are in the district and passed a TIF zone or whatever? Would that be able to be moved to do some improvements?
I mean, we could do a downtown district where you'd have to have a special tax on all these businesses.
I'm not talking about a necessarily special tax, I'm talking about the existing tax that we give, but designated to, for the improvements, to, you know, that two hundred or three hundred thousand.
Well, I think what the mayor's looking at, we're looking at something, a quick cash infusion. If you look at any theater or anywhere like this, you see placards on the back of the seats, we've got nine hundred seats there, we've got bricks out front, you've got a lobby where corporations will put their name up.
So let's try that, and if we have any short falls, then we can look at Plan B.
You can't really do that at a Fire Station. You can't really sponsor hoses and things like that, but...
Okay.
Bottom line, and Peter and Mike, you know, I'm convinced that a million dollars can be raised over a year or so to offset this stuff. At that age, you know, the economic development, but in order, it's more valuable to get this thing open through, you know, through whichever the most succeeding. This is the most, you know, I think, expedient way to do what other folks have spent, you know, like the Sanger in New Orleans, the Sanger in Hattiesburg. Yeah, so, I mean, and we do have one in mind that would be something, so, I mean, this is the fastest way. If you had a benefactor, said, let me five, six hundred thousand dollars, you know, there would be no question that we would do that and then pay him back, but we don't have that. And I think the Economic Development Fund was to engage, and you get things cooking, and again, that's my opinion, from, you know, a business standpoint, is we're getting action as fast as we can without really risking, you know, a whole lot of that economic development funding opportunity.
Got you. Mr. Tisdale, you still have the floor.
I don't have, I don't have anything to add at this moment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Guines?
I just want to footstomp the, which one is it? The tree grooming, the tree grooming, just encourage everyone to vote to pass the tree grooming, and John Henry Back Park, it's been a long time since we groomed those trees, and it behooves us to go ahead and get that done. Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker, we'll flip over to you.
Just a question on, I think all my questions regarding the Sanger were answered, or asked and answered, on A, and I know where it's a settlement claim regarding some, I guess, some issues with drainage or something. How do we, they file a claim, and then we send someone out, and they determine the price and the value of the damage, I guess, or the total?
It was a sewer backup, and they've, this is based off Servpro's estimate, and also they had a contractor to replace some flooring and carpets.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, and that's all I have.
All right. Ms. Newman? Mr. McGivory? The godfather of the council, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we gotta go back to P. Calling to P, we doing a Bay Vista Waterwell in line, and yet there's nothing in there about that at all. All it talks about is the Sanger, yet the Sanger's not on there anywhere, excepting a resolution on the table. So what are we doing with this Bay Vista Waterwell? Where's that at? How much money are we putting on that? Because it's not in the resolution.
Look, there was some confusion on this. If you look, what published, it had the wrong title. It was an old fact sheet that got copied for the title. That's what's on the agenda. Clicked on that link, it comes up and says, "Sanger," has nothing to do with Bay Vista.
So why'd it state that? Why'd it say Bay Vista?
I think we corrected it.
It was, it was corrected, I'd mentioned that, I caught that, mentioned it to the clerks and the administration, so after, I want to say, maybe Friday afternoon? It was Friday morning, it was already corrected, so if you printed that before Friday at noon, then you got the old cover sheet, so, fact sheet.
It was corrected, we did pick that up on...
It's been corrected.
Do I?
It's been corrected, councilman.
Where's it been corrected at?
Yeah, here we go, right here.
When you go into the link now, the link's been corrected.
Yeah, because they got ten seventy-nine, that's eleven oh seven, we got two different things total, so I don't know, I don't know what I was on there wrong or thought with. My computer's not working, so hopefully I made sure my computer wasn't working. I mean, it's blank. When we approved the agenda today, we approved the correct version. How come we didn't substitute that, Rachel?
There was nothing to substitute. The document, when you pulled it up, the only error was on the agenda itself. When you pulled the...
on the agenda itself. When you pulled the document up, it was the correct fact sheet, the correct resolution, everything else. The only place it was wrong was on the agenda. So we just corrected it. To be, there wasn't a substitute of the resolution.
We approved this one, not that one.
Yeah, I know. I know we approved it, but it's kind of misleading.
I think the councilman is indicating we should have maybe made a note of that when we were approving the changes today. When we suspended the rules, we probably should have made a note of that, right?
That's the right way to do it.
Yep. I agree.
Yeah.
Is that it, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, but they all rest up, it's renewals.
All right. Move on to, let's see, code enforcement.
All in favor?
Let's, let's vote on the consent, and then we'll take the exceptions afterwards. So all in favor of the consent agenda? Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll ask for the exceptions. Mr. Lawrence?
None.
None.
All right. None. None. All right. No one had any exceptions. Okay. All right. Let's move on to code enforcement. Ms. Tara Busby.
So I know, A is Brian Cooley, 116 Caldwell Avenue. This property, the violations have been resolved. Christine and Joseph Krawanek at 347 Bayview Avenue, violations have been resolved. Item C, Adam Brown and Jacob Pachowiak at 236 Dewey Circle. This property's still in violation.
You would leave it for me to pronounce it as well. No, go ahead. Move on. Is it just debris?
And then if you look at the other photo, it's growth in the first picture as well.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Adam Brown and Jacob Pachaliak?
Perfect. Pachowiak.
Pachowiak, okay. You say potato, I say patata. At 236 Dewey Circle, there being no one, this case is closed.
All right. Item D is Carlton Pace, 272 Benaki Avenue. That property, the violations have been resolved. Item E, Carlton and Lumico Pace, 270 Benaki, that's also been resolved. Item F, AME Enterprises LLC, 269 Benaki Avenue, violations have been resolved. Item G, Carmichael Property Group LLC, 348 Elmer Street. This one's still in violation.
All right. Thank you. This concludes code enforcement. Move on to, move on to routine agenda. What?
She's the last one.
I thought it was resolved on Elmer.
Still in violation.
Still in violation. Anybody here speak on behalf of Carmichael Group LLC, 348 Elmer Street? There being no one, this case is closed, as well as code enforcement hearing. All right. Motion for routine.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Tisdale?
Not a thing. Thank you.
Mr. Gines?
Walt.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I pretended to be George this time.
You handle it. Make sure you have the right question.
Okay, I got you. I got your place.
Good afternoon, council. Well, we don't have it in the system yet, but we have 265.7 that's currently with MEMA. It's been in step four or five for eight days now. So we will definitely have it probably within the next four to seven days. They're usually pretty good about it. So making progress, continue to get the money flowing in from MEMA and FEMA.
Got to talk to my assistant.
All right. Good job, Walt. Make sure you keep bringing the money.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions on routine other than that? Okay. So all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries on the routine. I would like to us to consider, we're adjourning in memory of Mr. Peritich. I'd like to make that motion. All seconded by everyone else. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.